Here.
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 Here, thank you. Next up on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions or modifications to the meeting agenda for this evening? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. There are, the consent agenda consists of minutes of the regular meetings of September 25 and October 9. Are there any additions, modifications to the meeting minutes for those two meetings? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same comment. Alright, next up on the agenda is community comment. This is the portion of the meeting where anyone among those many people in attendance can come forward and contribute comments on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda. And seeing no volunteers for community comment, I would take a motion to close community comment. And a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Alright, we have one public hearing on the agenda this evening. It's a variance for Robert N. Eldridge, 4200 Alden Drive in Edina. And Chris, you'll be introducing this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the subject property is at 4200 Alden Drive. It is a tear-down rebuild. The property is a corner lot. It is just south of West 42nd Street and west of Alden Drive, as you can see. The house fronts and faces Alden Drive, and the garage is a side-loading garage off of West 42nd Street. What you can see from this aerial photograph is that there are homes fronting both streets along Alden, and then also along West 42nd Street. This is a subject home as it's fronting Alden. This is the home that's directly adjacent to the west, and the home that's directly adjacent to the south. This is a survey of the property as it exists today. It's a story and a half home with a tuck-under, single-story garage. Again, the garage loads off of West 42nd Street. What you'll notice is that the garage setback is 5.8 feet away from the lot line, which is very non-conforming. The main portion of the house is about 9.8 feet away from the north lot line. This is a survey of the new house or new location of the proposed house. They will be increasing the side street setback to 15 feet, 14 feet to a small cantilevered window area, and then 21 feet to the garage opening. The required setbacks for this property, it will meet all of the setback requirements in terms of side, rear, and then front along Alden. It will match the front yard setback of the home along Alden. However, the setback along West 42nd Street is actually established by the house to the west, which is 42 and a half feet back. This ends up being the buildable area of the property, given the required setbacks. So, there's about a 4.9-foot wide strip on the property if you were to impose the required setbacks on the lot. What they are proposing is a three-car tuck-under garage with a basement, main floor and second floor. Here are the elevations of the home. This would be the front of the house, again, fronting Alden. The height of the home in plan is about 29 feet 11 inches to the top of the ridge. They'll be elevating the grade by one foot because they will be increasing the first floor by one foot, which is allowed per ordinance. So, the overall height is going to be approximately 31 feet, which is well within the 35-foot overall height requirement. This is the side elevation facing West 42nd Street. It, again, will have a lower tuck-under garage, similar to the single-stall garage that's there. It was a bit of a dilemma for the builder because right now, the existing garage is at just about exactly even with the street elevation. And because they can't lift the house more than one foot above what's there right now, the proposed garage will be very similar. They will be keeping the same grade along the house, although it will be about one foot higher to be even up and match that one-foot increase of the first floor. This is a survey of the house to the west. It was rebuilt in 1990. The orange boxes are actually the original house and garage on the property. The original house was much closer to West 42nd Street. In 1990, when they rebuilt the house, they backed it up, presumably to be even up with the house, to the west of that house, because the rules for this property were the same, or are the same, as for the subject property. So, the rebuilding of this house certainly did impact the setbacks for the subject property. This gives you the site plan of the proposed house in relation to where that existing garage opening is. Again, they will be 21 feet back for the garage opening, 15 feet for the main portion of the house. And those are the required setbacks on any typical corner lot. So, if this were a situation where there were no home located, fronting West 42nd Street, adjacent to the subject property, then they would be allowed a 15-foot setback for living space, 20 for a garage opening, and there wouldn't be any question, and it would meet all the requirements. Here, again, are some photos of what's existing there today. The existing home, the house that's directly to the west, if you're standing in the subject property's backyard, looking towards the south to the adjacent property, in the backyard, looking at the southwest corner towards the house to the south, and looking just in the backyard. You can see the single-stall garage here, and then also, looking south, if you're standing on West 42nd Street, you can see that there's actually sort of a negative grade to where that garage opening is currently. Is the proposed development reasonable for the site? Staff believes that's to be the case. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 zoning district. It would comply with all the ordinance requirements, with the exception of the setback from West 42nd Street, and it would comply with a typical side street setback for a corner lot. The new home is appropriate in size and scale. It does meet all of the requirements. Actually, the lot coverage is at about 1,900 square feet. They would be allowed another 350 square feet of coverage, given the size of the lot. The improvements will provide the setbacks that would be typically required. Staff does believe that it's a reasonable request and supports the request. Approval of the variance is subject to the following conditions. Subject to staff approval, the site must be developed and maintained in substantial conformance with the plans and survey that were date stamped, October 3, 2013, and October 8, 2013. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Commissioner Platter here.
You said the height was 35-feet limit. Isn't it 30 feet now?
As of January 1st, it will be 30 feet.
Okay. Well, that didn't, okay, I thought that went in sooner than later, but I guess not.
All the changes to the zoning ordinance will take effect as of January 1st, 2014.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Kerr.
That was my question, too. How does this proposal relate to the zoning ordinance amendments that are going to affect January 1st? Have you looked at how this compares to that? You mentioned the height requirement. I was wondering if there were other things.
It would still conform to all of them. The only thing that they would have to do is, I mean, they're showing in plan that it would currently meet the height requirements. It would be under 30 feet. But because we measure it from existing grade, and they're lifting the grade up about a foot, we have to add on a foot, so it's a little under 31 feet. I'm sure they could shorten it up and maintain the required height. But currently, it's 35.
What, how do we figure out which yard is the front yard on a corner lot?
They're both, in this instance.
And we measure height at the average on the front?
Well, I, from a setback standpoint, from a, an overall height requirement, it would be measured, the front yard according to our definition of lot would be the narrower width on a street, if it's a corner lot. And the opposite out would be the rear, so the two narrow sections would be the front and rear, and then the...
So, corner lots, it's the narrower side that's the front yard?
Correct.
For purposes of measuring height?
Correct.
And then we take that, because if you look at this, it's, I mean, did you say it was 31 feet is the height?
From average grade...
But it's average grade on the front, obviously, when you go around to the 42nd Street side, it feels a lot taller.
It does.
Okay.
I think the reason why the ordinance, there's also not the provision where you have to have added setback, given the height on a corner lot, because you don't have an adjacent home or property right next to it.
Right.
And across the street from this property is park property and the Montessori school.
Other questions? Commissioner Kerr.
So, again, the front of the home is considered the side facing Alden Drive?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, going back to those zoning ordinance amendments that we had proposed and that have been approved, that are, become effective January 1st, then the side of the home facing south would be a sidewall?
Correct, and it'll remain that.
And how, how long is that? And I can't recall what the sidewall articulation measurement is before there has to be some articulation?
I believe it's 20 feet. The sidewall is longer than that, and the articulation that they provide on that second, or on the south side, is they do have the second floor inset, and that also addresses the height requirement that we currently have the code, and also will have in the code in the future. And they also have the windows, so, and a doorway towards the back, or the porches. So, they do have those elements currently on their plan.
Okay, so, looking at the, the drawing, this drawing?
Yes.
Which side is the south? Is this the south right here?
Yes.
The one on the left, top-left?
Right, the one that you had your finger on? Yes.
Okay, so, there is, appears to be some articulation.
Yes, yes, there is.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alright, thank you, Chris. I assume you were the applicant. Why don't you come on up and introduce yourself? Tell us about your project.
My name is Robert N. Eldridge, and I'm owner of Ridge Creek Custom Homes and Air Care Companies. We're the builder slash developer-owner on this project. And, yeah, when we, going over some of the height restrictions and stuff, this was a, an interesting lot to work with, to say the least, but it's a beautiful neighborhood, and corner lots are always typically a little bit more challenging. So, when we approached it, Chris is correct, we could shave that one foot off of this roof line real easily to meet the 30 feet. When we designed this, we were trying to design it for two different parameters, both to be able to fit into the current overall heights with the step-back requirements as you go up onto a second story as well. So, as you see on what we've described as the left side, which is the south side, we do have that step-back requirement in there that meets your current codes. But then we maintained it close enough to the 30 feet, too, that if we had to shave a foot off the top of the roof, that we could, because I wasn't sure what we were going to get for approval on this, as far as timing goes. Anyways, one of the other things I wanted to point out, too, that Chris and I have been talking about in extensiveness here with the current, that one-foot requirement above an existing floor elevation right now, in your code that currently exists, what that does in a property like this, when you've got some grade changes and you're dealing with a street elevation on the side over there on 42nd, the current garage is actually lower than the street, and it's flooded several times. The previous homeowner told me about it flooding several times. So, our goal was to try to prevent that from happening in the future. So, we wanted to come in and have that garage be a foot higher, at least than the street, but not go too crazy with it. In talking with Chris, that would require an actual conditional use permit underneath the current codes of the city, and that would have been an extensive project to go through, and we didn't have the time to wait for that. So, we were able to squeak out seven inches between the garage slab and the curb height right now. And we're hoping that that's going to work. We did put a floor drain in the, in the garage, too, to try to catch anything that would happen. But that was a real challenge, and I guess I want to bring that up right now, because you guys are the Planning Commission, and that's maybe something that you could entertain to take a look at. I know from, from a fact in other cities, your public works people do not like to see our garage as this low to the street level, because it just causes a problem down the road. But again, I didn't have, we had talked about it, it would end up being, it could be up to 90 days or 120 days for me to get that approved, and we just didn't have the time to wait for that. So, this is a, potentially a spring parade home for us, and the time is clicking. So, and that was part of the reason, too, why we designed it under what we thought was going to be the future height requirements and setback requirements, and we tried to parallel with what was existing right now, too. So, tried to make a flexible project. I don't know if you have any other questions for me, but...
Questions for Mr. Eldridge.
Chris, I don't, actually, if we could put up the proposed building permit survey, either on the table or, it might actually be helpful on the table, and then Mr. Eldridge could, because I'd like him to show us some things on it. You might need the handheld microphone, Mr. Eldridge. So, what is the distance between your proposed structure and the property line on the south side?
We are at 6.48 feet.
Okay. And the, and the setback, Chris, is, the required setback is five?
Correct.
Okay. So, you mentioned drainage?
Mm-hmm.
And I see some arrows on here. I wonder if you can tell us what your plans are for drainage? I understand your plans for drainage for the garage, but what about for drainage? You're going to put a lot more house on this lot?
Yep.
And you've got some kind of funky elevation changes here. What are the plans to make sure that the house to the south doesn't get water in the basement?
Well, you can see an arrow right here, very lightly, and you can see an arrow going this way right here. This is kind of our breaking point, if you will, and we're pushing this water to the front yard. Anything that lands in the six feet over here, and then everything here is collecting and going this way. The backyard of this neighboring property is actually higher than me significantly as you get to the back end.
Yeah, it looks like it's at 886.
Yep.
And then falls off a little bit, but it looks like there's a low point at the, at the corner. I don't know what that is. What does that signify? The, oh, the fence, right at the corner of the fence.
There's a fence post right there. Yep. So, part of it, too, let me put my...
And then it looks like it gets lower as the, at the house. So, it's, it's kind of, it rolls back toward their house from the back of their...
Yeah, this, their property is negative drainage on their property, correct. So, what we are, that's what this little loopy line is right here. It's kind of insignia, we want to create a swale on our 6.4 feet and catch that water and push it around the side. Part of the other thing that we did, I'm going to throw my iPad up here, which I was afraid of, but it's not going to be very...
Actually, can you turn it around?
Yeah, 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 sorry. That was another reason that we chose roof lines like we did on this house. I will be able to put a gutter across the whole entire house and catch every drop of water that falls on that house and direct it off of the property. So, we'll have a gutter downspout at the front of the property up here, which will push it out towards the street. We'll have a gutter downspout over the back corner over here, and we'll be pushing that out into our own backyard. That was how we designed this roof system, to catch every drop of water that would ever shed there. So, the only thing that we're currently going to be dealing with is the 6.4 feet. And actually, if you looked at the existing house that's there right now, there's a concrete patio, if you will, that runs along that whole south side of the property, and the roof drops...
Just inside the fence there?
Yep, and the roof drops onto that, too. So, their current house drops more water into the neighbor's property on the south than mine will, because of the way that we're going to catch everything with the gutters.
And what is your plan during construction to manage that?
Well, we typically do all silt fencing and erosion control measures, just like is required with our building permit, demo permit, and all that. There would be a silt fence put in the property, a hard silt fence put in along that line there to protect anything from coming over. During construction, there, you're right, there's a moment in time there when you're putting the roof trusses up and setting all that stuff in place before the gutters can get installed. We could look at doing some type of guttering system. A lot of times, the grade is not 100 percent on my new property at that point in time. It's actually negative pressure to our foundation because of the settling that takes place and the, and the natural air moving out of the soil after you backfill. So, I don't anticipate there being a problem, but it's something that we could definitely monitor. Our number-one goal is to not have that phone call from the neighbor.
Ours, too.
Exactly, exactly.
It's a, it's a point of emphasis in recent times, and I, and we're going to work really hard to remind everybody that we can, how important it is to make that a priority during construction and once you're finished, so that, so that, that the new neighbors don't end up with being the people who are putting water into the old neighbor's basement.
Our goal, again, everything like this is a major change for the neighborhood that we go into, and we work in multiple other communities in the Twin Cities, and we've worked in Edina before as well. And our history has been very good with being the best neighbor that we can be as we're building a home. It's not fun, but we do manage our water, we do manage our job sites, and noise, and swear words, and all that stuff that goes into a construction home. We don't allow that stuff. So, I would say that our neighbors have enjoyed us, for the most part. Not everybody's happy, but you can't make everyone happy all the time.
Alright, very good. Other questions? Commissioner Platter here.
So, you mentioned you, you were or weren't going to abide by the 30-foot rule. I guess I was unclear what your, what your plan was. I know it's in between, but I just...
We built a house that's in between, but I could easily hit the 30 if I needed to. If you look at the front ridge line, that's, actually, what's better to look at here is this one right here. Where's my pen? You see that peak right there?
Yep.
I can cut that down and have it match that ridge on the back. It's not as pretty from the front of the street to have that, but I can do that, and I can meet the 30 feet.
I would strongly suggest you do that, especially from, you know, it's a little bit here and there, but from this elevation, I mean, you do have an extra, whatever, six or eight feet of garage, so it's going to look almost 40 feet, approaching 40 feet on that side, and that's...
Yep. This is a walkout, basically, is what you're dealing with here.
On 42nd Street, right.
Yeah, a side yard walkout. So, you've got a three-story house on that side, just like a regular walkout lot would be.
And then, did you, I'm assuming you talked to the neighborhood on this, do you get any comments from anybody? We didn't have any correspondence that I'm aware of, or...
I actually, I haven't had a chance to talk to the neighborhood. The, this street has got a lot of construction going on it right now, the 4200 block of Alden. I think there's five new houses going on. I've been over there several times. I haven't ran across the neighbor, and I didn't go actually knock on doors with this one, so...
This was noticed and everything, I assume, so there's nothing like that. And then what, what trees do you plan to leave there? Can you point those out to us? I know it's got a wide variety of on there, but...
We've got a maple tree here that's about 18 inches that will be left. This pine tree, it says it's a big...
Huge pine tree back there, right?
Yeah, it's not a very pretty one, but it's there. Apple trees at 10 inches in size usually don't make it much longer than that. They're getting pretty old, and they get brittle. It's, we have it on the plan to leave it at this point, but, you know, again, it's an apple tree. They're kind of fragile. It shows, it doesn't show an X on this pine tree, but with the grade and redoing the retaining walls from that existing house, this one right here, that one would not make it, because there's retaining walls and foundation and stuff right of the old house right next to that one, so that one would end up going. But then we've got the three, and actually, this is an ash that the city had tagged already to have us take it down, or elm, excuse me. So, that one is an elm that's irrelevant. So, really, it's a, I think that's a four-inch maple there, and a 10-inch maple there, and that 12-inch pine right there.
And then the one right on the corner of 42nd Alden, that's actually in the boulevard, right?
Yep, that's a big oak, and that's in the boulevard. We should be able to quarantine that off and salvage that.
Very important you quarantine that one off. I mean, that one, yes.
Yeah, fence it, yep, fence it off.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Grabl.
I just have a question for Chris. The current ordinance allows the roof height where it is without shaving anything off. Is that right?
That's correct. It could be taller.
Alright.
Any other questions for Mr. Eldridge? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask any members of the public who'd like to come up and comment on this item to do so. Seeing no one else in the audience, I'm going to assume that no one will burst through the door at any moment and want to participate in the public hearing, and would take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Alright, so, the public hearing is closed, and we'll move the discussion to the commission. Comments or discussion? Commissioner Fisher.
I just don't see what the problem was, why you couldn't build that two-foot-wide house, but...
You'd have to stand sideways in the kitchen.
To be fair, it was four and a half feet wide. I have a great picture of a house in London that's about that wide. Very cool house. I was thinking about bringing it just to freak you out, say, "I don't know, this clearly can be built." Am I seeing this right on the, and it's neither here nor there, I guess, but on the back porch, when you're facing the side street, is that essentially just kind of looks like a window, but it's just looking, and it's just the porch essentially framed in a couple places?
Yes, it is. It's looking over the outdoor kitchen that's back there.
Okay.
Where the grill area is.
Okay. I mean, overall, I don't, you know, know what else really could be done on this site. The only unfortunate thing is that the house takes on quite a massive look on that side street, but that's, I'm not sure what you really do to prevent that, given the grades and the fact that, you know, it's much better to have the garage in that location than really anywhere else, so... I guess I don't really have any other comments.
Any other comments? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
I move approval subject to the findings in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion, and a second. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes, and you have your variance, Mr. Eldridge. Thank you for coming tonight. Alright, next up on the agenda is the reports and recommendations portion of the meeting. I had asked Carrie to put the work plan on here, just as a kind of ongoing effort to try to kind of schedule how we're tackling that. I have talked with some members of the commission about volunteering for some leadership opportunities on our work plan, but I haven't completed that task, so I think I'll ask us to put that off until our next meeting, and we can talk further about how to tackle that and who will lead up what efforts on that front. Which then leads us to correspondence and petitions. We have, do we have a council connection? Instead, we, yeah, we have a council connection, and I think we had a memo from the city manager as well in our packets. So, if there's any comments on that, there's also an attendance sheet in the packets. Any comments on the council connection or the city manager's summary? Alright, so, next item is chair and commission member comments. I did want to echo Carrie's memo. We had tried to schedule a meeting. As you may recall, at our last meeting, we noted that our regular meeting for November would have been the night before Thanksgiving, and so we canceled that. And our regular meeting for December would have been the night after Christmas, so we canceled that. But we've got a little bit of work coming through the pipeline, so we tried to schedule an extra meeting on the 20th of November. From what Carrie...
From what Carrie tells me, the attendance would not be good. I don't think we could even get a quorum for the twentieth of November, so... So, that will not be happening. We'll just have to stay longer on the thirteenth of November.
Yes, please.
Which maybe is the right plan. Also, we are still looking for an opportunity to get the city attorney in here and have a visit with him on a variety of issues that we've been... We've been setting aside for a discussion. And Carrie, you're going to try and get some dates with him?
He has actually given a couple of dates. The first week in December, he would be available December 4th or December 5th. That would be a special work session date where we would... That would be the only item for us.
And those are...
It's a Wednesday and a Thursday.
What I'd ask you all to do is check your calendars, and let's get back to Carrie on that. Obviously, we've got three members who are not present tonight. I really would like to find a time that all of us can be there, because I think we've got lots of questions and good discussion to have with him. So... And I recognize we're heading into the holiday season, which is always challenging to get on people's calendars, but maybe like a Saturday night meeting might work.
He's not available, then, the...
He's not available on Saturday?
No. He's not available before our regular meeting the next week?
The thirteenth?
Thirteenth.
Is that the thirteen, November 13th?
I mean...
It's the thirteenth.
I guess I meant December even, if you're pushing it out that far.
Which would be the eleventh?
Eleventh.
He did say he could not make that date.
Can't do the eleventh, but he might be able to do the thirteenth of November?
Yeah. I have not checked with him on the thirteenth of November.
I mean...
We were thinking with the Pentagon that we would do that during the regular meeting, so maybe we would... Could do him on the thirteenth, but I'd have to double-check.
All right. Well, let's explore that, and if you can circulate that to folks, then the sooner we get on people's calendars, the better.
So, you're thinking Pentagon Park on the eleventh, then?
No, on the thirteenth.
Oh, thirteenth. Okay.
We're just making updates. Doesn't matter.
The next time...
We only have two dates, so November 13th or December 11th.
Right. There's only two meetings. Only one meeting in November and one meeting in December.
Action-packed.
Old-school, yeah. Other comments from...
Clock's fixed.
I know, because it's still twenty minutes to ten.
It is, isn't it?
We may not want to know. And that's... So, that's all I have on chair comments.